This is the Milford Planning Board now in session. Minutes of the previous meeting, do I hear?
I make a motion.
Motion made by Babe, seconded by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous. There are no eighty-one Ps. Number three, continuous site plan review, Deer Street, Stone Ridge, Business Park, Gutierrez Company. All right, that's what we have here.
Lena, in the packet, I had included my original memo because it has the conditions of approval from the last time, so...
I'm looking for it.
Hopefully...
Oh, I see it, okay.
A motion to approve would refer to the conditions I listed. It also includes the latest follow-up memo from Bonnie acknowledging that everything, all the comments have been addressed, and it also has VHB's initial response letter to those comments, and they're here to go over that. The other handout in front of you is just, is the same thing, only a larger version with full graphics with it. So...
So, we're ready for the presentation?
Yeah, and you're ready to approve it when they're done with their presentation.
All set? Go ahead, Ernie.
I'm Ernie Bettinari. I'm a lawyer in Milford. My office is at 12th Avenue Street, for the record. We were here last month, and you might recall that at that time, we summarized the reasons for our visit, and they were fairly simple. We started the project on Deer Street with the Gutierrez Company many years ago. We basically had site plan approval on the project, which is, again, as you recall, is the first proposed development within the Business Park Zoning District, which would have erected the buildings roughly in the, well, exactly in the configuration, you see them on the site plan that's to my left. And we were here because the site plans, as extended and as far as could be extended, had all lapsed. We were here seeking any of the restoration of the site plan approval so as to enable the Gutierrez Company to continue to market the property as being appropriately zoned and permitted. On that evening, questions that Bonnie, the town engineer, had had, because this project was new to her, since the other one had been approved during Mike's time as the town engineer, and Bonnie asked several questions which required some follow-ups, and those follow-ups finalized in a meeting last week, also included some correspondences back and forth. But in any event, they were satisfactorily concluded, and Bonnie is now satisfied that the answers that were provided are reasonable. That's in your package, as Larry described it. With me tonight is Ed Schioli from the Gutierrez Companies. He is the project manager and has been associated with this project for a very long time as well. And we're here to answer any questions that might arise, but we're here basically asking that your board simply vote to reinstate the site plan approval that had been on this property for the last six or seven years. That would be all my prepared remarks would include, and then we turn it over to you.
Quick question, Ernie. Would you refer to the roundabout C, exit twenty ramps? So you're referring to both? North and south?
No. No, it's the southbound.
Four ninety-five ramp.
And that's why I was looking, because it doesn't specify. So it's just the one after, or the one closest to your property?
Yes.
No, 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 no.
The one that's there, close to Deer Street.
Yeah, it's the southbound ramp.
Subject property.
Wait, it's the southbound?
The southbound ramps. They have the...
It just doesn't rest...
No, I know. I was just referring to the overall section sixty-one finding.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the northbound ramps stay signalized as is, and the southbound ramps turn into a...
Well, there was a modification, I believe, as well as potential timing change for the northbound ramps, but it stays, it stays signalized. Yeah, correct.
Just looking over the map, I just, I just need to reaffirm everything. It's been a while.
It has.
It has been a while, so do you mind just giving us some idea of, you know, where...
As you can see from the rendering that's closest to Ed...
Yes.
The project itself is situated in such a way as to be proximate to the, that would be the northbound ramp, the northbound lanes of four ninety-five.
Okay, all right.
This project is located on Deer Street, which is an old road, not an abandoned road, but an old road, down in the vicinity of Cedar Street. With your permission, this is chairman, you see these structures which are located across Cedar Street, those are the storage and office buildings that are down there now.
Right.
This project opens up in this general direction, and I don't remember the exact total acreage, I think it's about eighty-two, in total acreage, and there are four buildings that were proposed and under the old site plan review, each of which was approximately a hundred and something thousand square feet. There's about six hundred thousand square feet of office space which would ultimately be developed, all in that general area. This is the property that was rezoned by the town meeting back in eight or nine.
I remember all that. I remember that, yes.
And this is zoned Business Park.
All right. I just needed to get some, something in my, okay. Anyone have any questions? Babe, Joe?
Sure, me. I just had one, Larry, on your comment, you talk about the Deer Street Bridge and the no building permit shall be issued until Deer Street Bridge plans are finalized. I guess my only question is, I sort of understand that, but I'm just wondering, do we know the condition of the existing Deer Street Bridge in terms of them being able to get anything across that with any heavy loads, or does that bridge need to be put in prior to them developing the site? In which case, not, they can't get a building permit until Deer Street Bridge is re, is actually built. Is that what we should be asking? Because I don't know the condition of that bridge, but I don't want them, considering right now, it's our, it's a public road, I don't want them going over with heavy loads and then having a problem with the bridge and then...
No, I think that was technically part of the subdivision approval. That's why the, I referred back to the DOT permits, because it was a mixture of physical improvements that were triggered either by the subdivision approval itself or just the ability to build out the site plan. So you can't get there from here unless you do the street, which will eventually be a public street. But that, that was a holdover from the original decision, which seemed to work well enough because of the section sixty-one finding from DOT that's going to have to be done anyway. So I just kept that in there so there was some consistency in everybody's expectations. I don't think they can get there from here.
Yeah, I don't think they can either. That's why I'm wondering whether we're signing up something that, that sort of almost gives a false sense of...
No, the...
You know, I don't think they can get a building permit till they replace that bridge, because I'd be...
We think we agree with Mr. Cal Jones.
Yeah, I don't think you can access beyond that without doing something to that bridge.
It's always been our expectation that the infrastructure had to go in. We had conversations that you were party to, if you remember, Joe, about the wing walls and about all those other kinds of things. And it's always been our understanding that the infrastructure had to be located and built before we could really think about populating the subdivision. Larry's point is, is a point that frankly I omitted in both times I've been before you, but we also had the property approved as a subdivision as well, to retain the flexibility to deal with someone who might want to purchase one of the lots.
Yeah, I just didn't want to put that as a condition in ours if in fact, I wasn't, you know, if we were holding the condition of build the bridge before you get a building permit.
And that's going to be done.
Yeah, and again, I don't think it, I don't think it's...
It has to be done, okay. Anyone else, John?
No, fine.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion subject to Larry's comments.
Motion by Pat, seconded by John.
Are you changing comment one to reflect what I just said, or are you just...
No.
So, wait a second now. What's Larry's comment?
Well, it says, "No building permit shall be issued until the Deer Street Bridge plans are finalized and submitted to the planning board for acceptance. Preliminary bridge design shall be submitted to, for planning board review at the start of the mass DOT review process."
Yeah, so the bridge, the bridge needs to be done first.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can access the property until you do something to the bridge. I don't really...
That's a given, right.
Yeah, but I, I guess I don't know why we wouldn't change it to say that.
Well, I was trying to make as few changes as possible, since all of the permits that ultimately govern the development of the site are state permits that have been in place all along. The only reason they're back here is because of the administrative site plan review, peculiarities of having only a one-year duration and, you know, all those continuances. So I was trying not to change any more language than necessary.
I recall the design of the bridge, and I thought the design of the bridge that was submitted to us a time ago, I thought, was acceptable.
The likelihood...
I think the ques, Joe, is your question that you want to see the bridge built before a building permit is issued, is that what...
Well, the wording, that's, the wording says you could conceivably get a building permit before the bridge is built. That's what the wording is. I'm saying I don't want that in the decision, because I don't, I don't want to give the flavor that we're thinking they can do that. I don't believe anybody's a doubt that they can't do that. I just don't want a decision, I mean, whether it be us or whatever, Gutierrez could sell this tomorrow.
I see.
And it goes to somebody else, and somebody else says, "Oh, I can get a building permit now." No, I, I don't want that in there, that's why I'm saying it.
So it'd be till the bridge street, till the Deer Street Bridge is constructed?
Yes.
Yeah. Again, we don't...
Yeah.
Objection here.
I think Joe has a very valid point, though. If you were to spin it off and sell it to somebody, you could be misleading.
But the, but the board, just, just to clarify, that's the first sentence. The second sentence still deals with the preliminary plan being previewed by this board before it goes to DOT.
Yes, and that I agree with.
You want that in there.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
If that's the motion, then...
I'll modify the motion to reflect the change that was just added.
Motion made by Pat to accept the site plan with modifications that Larry just talked about, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
All right. Number four, reconsideration of inside plan, one twenty, one twenty-eight, Midway Street, Milford Plaza Association.
Let's make this quick, Mr. Antonopoulos. I know I made a mistake, and I'll be the first to say that. Clearly, I asked for something that was outside of my realm.
Good evening, Mr. Antonopoulos.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Antonopoulos, on behalf of the applicant, RD Management, Milford Plaza, I'm here tonight seeking a reconsideration of one condition in the site plan approval, and that was the condition that we install, manufacture, and design a grate to go off-site. My review of the process or the procedure would be is that it would be an unenforceable condition, plus I believe because of the manner in which the drainage systems are not connected, it could create liability for the town, and I would respectfully request that you remove the condition from our site plan approval. Allow us to continue the site plan with the approvals that you've made, which were very, very cooperatively agreed to, and there was a significant amount of effort made to make sure that the drainage is significantly upgraded to today's standards.
All right.
I'll make a motion to modify, to eliminate that condition.
Off-site drainage.
Off-site drainage grate.
Motion made by Pat to eliminate the condition.
Said I was wrong.
Seconded by Babe. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, sit right there, Joe.
I'm going to sit. We're going to let Ryan go, though. Okay?
Okay. I'm going to go down to number seven, bond release. Agreement, Phase Three Upper Charles Trail, Walden Woods PRD.
On behalf of Eastland Partners, the developer, hey, I request the bond release for the completion of the rail trail. It's my understanding that it has been reviewed by your town engineer, and that she has found the condition acceptable and that the bond can be released.
Okay.
Bonnie's letter's coming around, if you want to actually read it.
I was going to say it.
She acknowledged that all the items on the latest punch list have been completed, and she's recommending release of the bond.
The only remaining of the bond is ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars, yeah. I'm just going to read this into the, you know, it's, work on the upper trail has been completed by Eastland Partners, December two thousand fourteen. We reduced the construction bond to ten thousand dollars. Eastland has completed all punch list items. I recommend bond release. Sincerely, Bonnie Reese, Town Engineer.
I make a motion to release the ten thousand dollar bond.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Babe to release the ten thousand dollars. Seconded by John. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Unanimous of four. One abstention.
And it's four to one.
Four to one.
No, 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 I abstained.
Okay. We're going to go right down to number nine. ZBA Variance, one twenty-four Midway Street, RD Management LLC, Kmart Plaza. Okay, Joe?
Well, I've, on behalf of the Kmart Plaza owners, I've submitted a new request for a freestanding sign that is, exceeds the height requirements of the town of Milford substantially. In the process of discussing this with my client, we've reviewed signage up and down Route four ninety-five. The applicant has spent a considerable amount of money to secure the release of the building and to bring that building and the site back into compliance with all of your overall regulations, and is attempting to attract national tenants. Coincidentally, each and every of the national tenants that they speak with said, "We'd really like to be, have some visibility from Route four ninety-five." I know that the applicant made a prior presentation which we withdrew without prejudice, and I've resubmitted, and what I have done is suggested to my client that if this board were to give any kind of favorable consideration, that the favorable consideration should have something to do not just with the site, but with the town of Milford. And there is no advertisement along four ninety-five about the Milford community, and so the sign is presented, and a condition of the variance would be that the sign would carry the wording, "Milford Crossing Gateway to Milford." That would allow motorists coming along four ninety-five to have the first view of our community, other than a sign that says, "Entering Milford," to display Milford's cooperativeness with retail development, and hopefully to attract national tenants that would pay significant rents and therefore increase the tax basis. So what we've done is we've had the sign redesigned, and the site and the height has been determined after a series of view sheds we're taking along four ninety-five with balloon tests and some imaging, and when I go to the zoning board on Thursday night, I will have some views that have been taken along four ninety-five that will show the impact. And the sign as designed will be able to be seen both by motorists traveling from the north to the south and from the south to the north. It'll obviously be a two-faced sign, and again, each side will have the statement on it, "Milford Crossing Gateway to Milford," and then there'll be room for tenant notification underneath. We believe that the sign is warranted for the amount of effort that's being put into the redevelopment of it, and frankly, when, again, going up and down four ninety-five and seeing that other signs like this exist on four ninety-five, we believe that it can be done in such a way that it's not detrimental to your zoning by law, and I say that because there's only one spot in the town of Milford where you go on an interstate highway and have visibility, and that's obviously the one oh nine Route sixteen corridor. And in those spots, there's very few, in fact, this is the lowest elevation of all of the developments in the area, and one that could benefit for the sign. So I recognize that the board has in the past not been in support of variances. I recognize that your role in this process is that as an advisory board, but I'd like to just thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief explanation as to the dynamics behind the application, and we would ask that you send a favorable recommendation to, onto the zoning board for Thursday night's hearing.
Can I just ask a ridiculous question of you, Joe?
Go ahead, Pat.
Essentially, you're reserving, or you're having a hundred and ninety square feet, naming the establishment, Milford Crossing, and you're only allowing two hundred and thirty for your tenants. I guess my question is...
We believe, we believe that's enough exposure for the tenants that would warrant the exposure. We do not believe that every tenant that's in that facility necesses, will need that type of exposure. We hope to attract four or five major retailers to the area and believe that they will benefit from that.
And again, your sign's a little deceiving, because you're showing four spots, that's why I was...
Correct.
That's why I'm just a little curious about that.
Lena, just a note to the board, this application is actually showing the proposed location in the same spot as you just approved on the site plan, which is near the north driveway that's getting reconfigured in your latest approval. So this will actually be totally outside the line of sight. Unfortunately, the site plan that the location is shown on is the old existing conditions plan. If you had the new plan, it would show clearly that the poles are back far enough.
That's a good, thank you, Larry, that's a good comment. I couldn't submit the new plan because it wasn't approved at the time I submitted the application, but the sign will go where you decided it will go pursuant to your site plan. And again, I think that the type of sign that it is with the large space between the two pillars is such that there's no local, there'll be no blocking of visual sightlines at the driving level, and in fact, anyone driving on one oh nine or on Beaver Street will actually not be able to see the sign. It is really a sign for four ninety-five. And I would point out that the only other situation, you have the sign that was approved for the Toyota dealership, which is very difficult to see from Route four ninety-five. In fact, that's part of how we picked the height, taking the view shed along the line, and the only other sign was the one that La Quinta incorporated within the building when they built an additional story. So that's a wall-mounted sign because the building, where the building is situated. This really would be the only sign that would provide visibility for four ninety-five other than the already approved one. Obviously, as you come down four ninety-five from the north, you see the Sports Authority Building and the lows, though they're so visible. We don't have the benefit of that view shed because we're so low. So again, that's, that's why we're making this request.
I guess I'll continue to go on. I don't see the hardship. I don't know why Kmart, why Kohl's wouldn't be in here next week requesting their sign. They'd like to have visibility on four ninety-five. They're a nationally known company. They were able to move in and were able to, were successful. I don't know why they wouldn't. I would think McDonald's would love to have one where they are. Burger King might like one where they are. I don't think we turned Milford into this. I don't. I have, I see no reason. It's, it's, it's a piece of property, it's the property they've had. They bought this property, they bought the property knowing the zoning at the time that they did it. I don't see the hardship. I think, I think it, like the idea of putting the sign up with Milford, Kevin Meann has welcomed to Milford as you come down the other four ninety-five ramp, real great, but I don't think we want to turn Milford into this, and I don't think it stops here. And once, once we open the door based on what I see as a hardship that isn't, I don't think we can stop anybody else. So I can't, I can't go forward with it. I think it goes against everything that we've tried to do in Milford. I don't care if other, if Rentham's done it, you know, Rentham's got a casino now, you know, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on down there. I understand they have the outlet malls. The outlet malls are a hell of a lot bigger than this development ever would be. I don't think, I don't think the ones that have it are necessarily the same, and there's a whole bunch of towns up and down four ninety-five that don't have it. So we're not going to be the only one that doesn't. So I don't see the hardship.
That we're setting a precedent when we do that, and when we do that, as Joe said, everybody will be knocking at our door, so with that...
I'm only here for one client, so...
I know that.
I promise you, I'd only be here for one client.
I understand that, but there's a whole list on one oh nine that Joe, Joe, you mentioned, which I can, I can understand.
I can't dispute Joe's comments on that regard.
So with that, just, is there any other comments?
I...
What did your balloons teach you? Because I, you guys picked eighty, I mean...
Balloons taught us that the eighty-foot...
No, you liked the eighty. The balloon said that you liked the eighty, but...
The only spot, that, than anything below.
What did anything below show?
Anything below that, it breaks the visibility up. That was the minimum point where visibility could be maintained even with tree growth.
I don't have a problem with the four hundred and twenty square feet. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
The height I have a problem with.
Well, that's the issue.
No, 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 I'm just, well, no, there's two issues. There's actually two issues.
Size and height.
Size and height, yeah. What is the pleasure of the planning board on the size? Because there are two issues.
You mean the height of the size?
The height and the size. The height.
I agree with Pat, I don't have a problem with the...
I don't have a problem with the four hundred and twenty square feet opposed to one hundred, because that doesn't bother them.
Well, I think we, I think we cut, I think we cut down the size.
I think there's plenty of other sides of the town of Milford that have similar-sized signs that have gone from the zoning board, and I don't think the four twenty is my objection. The height clearly is, is an objection.
Right.
But if, if we, if we take the, we don't need the Milford Crossing Gateway to Milford out, the sign is two hundred and thirty square feet.
Still exceeds, because you're only allowed one hundred.
Okay, I'm more apt to accept two hundred and thirty than four hundred and something, especially if we're going down to a lower height. I don't know what Gateway to Milford at, at twenty feet buys us, so...
The...
I guess...
I believe that for the purpose of our discussion, that would be a different application, because the size, the size and the height go together in this one.
That's...
So I think if that's not denied, we'll have to consider something else.
Yeah, it may be more understandable to the ZBA if you don't parse it out. Just make a recommendation on the application.
And I think it's so damn high in the, in the sky that we'll actually, you'll never have noticed it from the road. I really don't. I don't think you'll ever see it from the road.
View sheds all show that this frankly is a sign for four ninety-five.
And that you can spot when you're coming around waters.
Yep.
That's basically what it's for.
Appreciate the opportunity to make a brief presentation. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the planning board?
Make a motion, we sent an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that I don't, I don't see any hardship in it compared to any other parcel, and that by, by allowing this at this site, we open ourselves up to a magnitude of other signs coming in requesting the same, the same type of variance, and have no ability to control it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second on Pat. All in favor?
All in favor of unfavorable.
Yes.
All in favor of unfavorable, right. Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Good night, Joe.
Okay, back to number six.
Okay, back to number six. Site plan review, seventy-two to seventy-four, Sumner Street, Matthew Consigli. Okay, the applicant requests the site plan approved to construct two-story seventeen thousand six hundred square feet professional office building on the subject property. The proposal is to rearrange the site to incorporate the existing, the existing Consigli Company headquarters and a new building into the campus-style development. The board recently approved the eighty-one P plan to create the parcels for this redevelopment. Parking and access to the two buildings will be reconfigured to accommodate the office campus and provide safe access throughout the site. The existing northerly driveway to the headquarters building will be eliminate, will be eliminated and relocated a hundred and forty feet to the north. The existing parking area will be expanded to the west and north under the portion of Lot nineteen to provide parking for the entire campus. The parking design establishes accessible loop drive aisle for fire and emergency vehicles through the entire campus. I have reviewed the site plan and find that applicable zoning requirements appear to meet, therefore I approve the site plan with all of an agency, Town Planner Larry Duncan. Ms. McCarthy, I review the proposed site plan to seventy-two, seventy-four, South Bay Street. I propose the design meets the Mass Stormwater standards and therefore, and not only anywhere, I have no other comment, just from our town engineer. Fire department has, there's no changes, and there's a list from the water department. Do you have that, Pete?
I do. I address those.
Huh? Can you have you addressed every one of those?
Yes, I have.
Okay, that's, that's good. It's a long list.
You get him to read that?
Okay, Peter.
We need to have a conversation with him to get rid of this crap.
I work with Gary, you're in Helman, I'm representing Consigli. Construction with me tonight is Mike Murphy. He's from Consigli.
I'm going to go through the project. The project's located at Sumner Street, which runs along the bottom of the page here, and it is on the side of the page right there.
We have seventy-two, Sumner Street here, which is the granite building here, and it has parking around it. We also have the seventy-four, Sumner Street, which is in this location here, and it's And it's, it's, uh, the existing ambulance garage with pavement in the front. Uh, the back area here, uh, currently is like a contractor's yard, uh, for storage of equipment and materials. And then a small portion of the lot in this location here is basically grass in some woodland area. Basically, the project slopes from Purchase Street down to Sumner Street and all the drainage, uh, runoff gets collected by Sumner Street as well. Uh, so what we're proposing to do is we're proposing to, uh, remove, uh, the ambulance structure and the pavement in the front. Uh, we're also proposing to remove, uh, the pavement which comes up the side of the granite building and connects into here. So all this is pavement and then all of this lot here is pavement. So that's all going to be removed. And then what we're going to do is we're going to construct, uh, the new building right here, which is a two-story building roughly seventeen hundred square feet in size.
Thousands.
Thousands.
Thousands, excuse me.
I think it'd be worth their investment at seventeen hundred.
Um, basically, the, the, the building itself is going to be like a, a split level. It's going to be two, two levels, but it's going to be, the front portion is going to be at the existing grade, which is one own, which is one ninety. And then you're going to come up a little bit and it's like an entryway where there's going to be, they're going to construct a courtyard to connect the two buildings.
Similar to what the granite building looks like.
Similar, yes. I think that I've only been in there once. But this is a, a four-year, which you, you step up and then it'll, this grade here will match the top floor. So this is roughly three, I think it's, uh, three hundred, from what I recall. This is three hundred and this is one ninety.
Eight hundred.
Two hundred.
Well, it better not be, otherwise you've got a big, real big floor, a hundred and ten feet between floors.
That's all right. I just want to make sure.
High ceiling.
So upper is three oh three.
Yeah, it's two ninety. I'm sorry. It was two ninety is the bottom here. And then, and then three oh three in the back. Um, so basically, um, we're going to bring in an entrance here, do parking in this location here. Come back and then you're going to have this large parking area in the back here. And then you'll come around and it ties into the existing parking area of the granite side thing. So by doing that, come over to here. We have existing sewer that runs along the front of the property, which comes up. This is all an eight-inch sewer line. Right now, the granite building ties into this sewer line. And then we're proposing the new structure to tie into that sewer line. I just came from the sewer board tonight and they approved, they approved this. Okay? Um, water, we're going to tie, the water department wants us to bring in two new lines, separate, two new separate lines. A six-inch line for fire and a two-inch line for the domestic. We are proposing a hydrant in this location here. And there's an existing hydrant right here that we're going to relocate to over here because this is going to be all grass with a walk. And like I said before, a courtyard that will connect the two buildings for employees. Um, proposed drainage, uh, we're actually decreasing the impervious, um, on the combined of the three lots. So we are decreasing the impervious, but we are proposing an open basin here to catch any runoff that's coming from Purchase Street in this grass area. It's going to be caught into this open basin and then discharged into a grass swale over here. Um, the parking area basically is split in half. Half goes this way, half goes that way. All this drainage is going to be collected with catch basins, um, brought to a drain in, or then a storm scepter before it goes into this vegetated basin. From there, the drainage comes down, it discharges and goes down a swale, which is going to be vegetated. And also this front portion of the parking area, instead of doing catch basins, we're going to do openings in the, in the, in the berm. So we're going to do some low impact development for drainage along the side here. And then it goes into, uh, a drop inlet that then ties into this drain line and then goes into a storm scepter and then out into Sumner Street. Um, come back here, this portion of the property slopes this way. It will be collected before it goes into any of the drainage here. Brought down to another storm scepter and then that will be tied into Sumner Street. So we're not increasing any, any, we're not increasing any rate or volume into the, into the drainage into Sumner Street. So we are mitigating all our storm events. We are improving the drainage that was there. Um, so I mean, that's basically it. For my summary of what we're proposing, and if you have questions.
Looks good to me.
What's your TSS removal then?
TSS removal? It's, it's over eighty percent. I have three storm scepters for three different, three different, uh, locations. And then we are getting TSS removal from the grass swales and the vegetated basin. But the eighty percent is prior to anything going into the, into the basin because we need to, we need to meet that.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'll fall into the, because the town may be able to use it seeing how you're probably decreasing total TSS from the site, so.
Right, and we also, I also met with Bonnie and she wanted me to look at doing vegetated swales and basins to get rid of the phosphorus. So that's what we did propose.
Excellent. Anyone else, Seth?
The only thing I'd like to see, Pete, is instead of a four-foot stockade fence, I'd like to see that go to a six. Only because you have residential behind you. And I understand presently it's owned by Mr. Consigli. I understand that.
Yeah, I know, I saw, I noticed that on, uh, landscaping plan, it did call out four foot, but we were proposing to put in a six foot.
I, I would rather you do a six rather than a four because you have a four listed.
Yeah, that's your, oh, I'm sorry, that's your zoning anyway, I think.
No, it's max.
Max is six.
Max is six.
The only other thing I'd want just to be sensitive, I guess, only because the last time a commercial development came in behind residential, and again, I know there's not a lot of the residential, I know preponderance is owned by Mr. Consigli, but I'm referring to the Sentry House where there was a problem with the outdoor lighting. So I just want to.
Oh, okay.
Not be a pain, but I want to at least address that the lighting has to be in such a way.
Yeah, I think we did.
That it's not.
If you look at the second to last page, there is a lighting plan.
There is? Okay.
The lighting plan looks great until you turn them on and oddly enough, it shines where it shouldn't shine. So I just want to suggest that if the lighting is incorrect and becomes a nuisance, it needs to be addressed by the applicant. That's all I'm going to ask for. Again, the plan looks fine and I don't envision that there will be a problem. I just want to make reference that if there is, it needs to be corrected by the applicant.
That's a good point, Ken.
Well, we went round and round the last time.
I remember it well. I remember it well. I remember it well.
Are you putting up a freestanding sign?
Uh, we didn't propose any sign.
They already had one up front, don't you?
We do. At the existing curb cut.
That's the only one that you're going to have.
Side, that's all we're going to do.
Okay.
Perfect.
The plan is that this, this new sort of entry is minimized. We're not trying to make that be the visitor sort of prime access. So leaving the sign is just that the curb cut says it.
Eighty-four. Sure you don't want, you want to be able to see it from four ninety-five?
You're actually going the other way. Try to be quiet.
Really? You should put a balloon up and see how high you need it.
Okay.
Make a motion. We approve the site plan.
Motion made by Babe to approve the site plan. Second by Joe. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, good night.
Do you want this back? You didn't do a cover sheet with signatures?
I did do a cover sheet.
So there's only one sheet with signature?
Well, they're all, I did, the plans all had.
Do you want these, Peter?
I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah, I could take them back. I don't want it. That's a lie.
Sorry to interrupt you, Peter. Also.
It's all right. You do whatever you want, Larry. I'll pick them up tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, number, uh, number eight, Lena.
We're number on number eight. Reconsideration, ZBA variance referral three Julia, Julie Circle by Jeffrey Ryder. Okay, reconsideration. Madam Chairman, the applicant requests a variance to construct a ten feet by sixteen feet, a hundred and sixty square feet accessory building on a subject property to be located eleven feet from the side property line. As per the ZBL section two, three point two point four, the maximum accessory building size allowed within half the side yard setback requires, requirement is a hundred and twenty square, a hundred and twenty square feet. You will recall that this application was originally reviewed at your June second meeting, at which time you had forwarded an unfavorable favorable report to the ZBA. Due in part of the insignificant, insufficient information having been provided. The applicant has since required, acquired an acute site plan of the proposal and is requesting your reconsideration as the ZBA has yet to open the public hearing on this case. The parcel is an overly irregularly shaped lot with an easily side property line at only thirty-degree angle to the street. The house, however, was constructed substantially parceled to the street. Use of the year, of the year, the rear yard near the house is further constrained given the location of the rear deck and the septic system. Therefore, I recommend, I recommend a favorable report to forward to the zoning board of appeals, provided that the board is satisfied the need for the additional building side constraints of, of, uh, to, of a hardship. So, Larry, here it is.
Yeah, the last, the last sheets, the reduced, reduction of the site.
The applicants in front of us, Lena, let's ask them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so busy reading all your stuff.
I'm Jeff Ryder from Free Julia.
Okay, Jeff, yeah?
As, I believe you have a copy of.
I do.
The lady's drawing.
They don't have that size if you've got a.
I have a few of these if you.
Anybody that needs a bigger.
This is fine.
That's Lena.
I'm good. I, I can see it.
You'll need it for the ZBA, so.
All right. Thank you.
It's a very odd shaped, uh, piece of property and where, um, I would like to pu- put the shed is really one of the only feasible locations for it. So I appreciate it to you.
Tell me, why does it have to go there? In other words, why couldn't it go over by the, what's listed as the garden planter?
Right.
Why couldn't it go over to the, from looking at the house, uh, to the left-hand side? I'm just curious. You, you, you're saying that that's the only feasible.
Well, it, 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 the, the grade of the land would make that very difficult to, to put the, the, the plot in. And it's right next to my, uh, an actual neighbor that's physically right there. Um, if, if you're talking about like over in this area here.
Do you want to put that up on the board and talk about it?
No, he can, we all got a copy of it.
I know. It, it's easier.
This really is all woods from this point here. Uh, septic area goes here. This, there's a very little strip that, that goes there and it's, it's a pretty steep grade. And realistically, some of the tools that we're going to keep in there are, are the snow blower and so forth, which the driveway comes right to the end here. It, it just makes the most sense for us to, to place it there. Unfortunately, it, it, the, the, the property line is so close here with the, the, the septic system. However, this thick with woods here in my neighbor's yard and at least the nearest building is, is good ninety feet away. And then his house is even farther away.
Between, between the septic system and the garden planter, why couldn't it go in there?
Um, there really isn't any, enough room to put it there. I, I would have to remove the garden planter.
What is a garden planter, just so we understand what we're referring to?
It's a raised garden.
Okay.
It's a permanent area where I, it's about this tall.
Oh, okay.
It's filled.
And right, and right to the left of that, the grade is that different?
Oh, uh, yes. It, it really, we have, it doesn't show it here, but there's actually a, 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 a drainage variance, uh, easements I have on the property, so I'm not actually supposed to change the grade in this area.
The, uh, the application is to waive the size because the section I quoted, uh, allows for a half the distance setback for the hundred and twenty square foot accessory buildings. Uh, his is forty square feet larger than that because he's got too much stuff to put in it. So, uh, the, the location per se, uh, isn't exactly the problem. It's the fact that it's ten by sixteen instead of ten by twelve, basically. Uh, if that helps clarify at all.
And I'm, it, just so that you know, I'm getting one of the nice eastern sheds that's a really nice design. It'll look, we're putting the same type of siding as the house itself.
Okay. I understand.
They have one of the full-size plans.
Absolutely.
I mean, and it's, it's, it's dire necessary to have a hundred and sixty. Just ask him.
Yeah, we, I really need them. I wanted more.
Eleven feet, so that's.
I can just barely do it. I mean, I, 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 I guess I, I still don't see the effort. I mean, if you move it next to the garden planter, maybe it doesn't work, but we're not asking for, we're then not asking for as much of, you know, most of it almost meets.
If you stay with what he's suggesting is if you stay within the building allowable.
The back corner may go over that eleven foot, but almost all of it is there.
Okay.
You know, at least we're minimizing the impact. I, it, again, I'll, I'll go back. It may be the nicest shed in the world, but this is permanent. The guy next to you may decide he wants to put up something that looks like a chicken coop when you sell your home. He has the variance. I, I don't, I, I.
I, you know, it's actually the, the guy, this guy here has a two-story, four-car garage that he runs his, uh, you know.
But as long as it meets zoning, he has the right to do it.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
So what I'm saying is that to try to minimize at least the impact, I, I think it can be moved so that it's not as.
If I understand you, when you talk about impact, a visual impact.
No, I'm talking about the impact and zoning. The fact that you've got, you've got the whole building right now within the setback that's not allowed. I'm saying, okay, let's not have all of the, maybe you can't get all of the building out of there, but you can minimize the amount of the building that's within that setback. If you're telling me the rest of the site is not available, which I, I haven't been out there, but I'll, I'll take that as, as maybe that's the case.
Really, it, it's, it's not accessible. I think they were very generous in, in showing where that tree line is. It, it, trying to, um, give more space to the yard. If you actually saw the yard, it, it's really.
I mean, I, I, I've designed enough of these, to be honest. I can't imagine that off the back of the septic system, you don't have ten-foot level because when they did the excavation to do the septic system from where the pipes are, you had to have ten feet of level ground out there, pretty much, in order for the design of the septic system. So I, I, I just think there's a location out there that would, that would be a lot less invasive to the zoning in town than, than where you're showing it.
If, if he had a ten by twelve shed, he wouldn't need a variance.
Well, that's a different story. But I'm assuming he already ordered, he already, he already ordered the shed.
No, actually, I, I.
You have not.
Did not order the shed because I want to make sure that I, you know, I pay for the drawings and stuff like that. I just have to make sure everything ducks are in a row.
Ten by twelve shed.
I, I would appreciate, really appreciate it if you could seriously consider the, uh, the twelve by six, the ten by six.
I, I, I don't see the hardship, I guess. I mean, it's not, everybody would like to have some things. I, I, you know, I, I, when I put up my, my extra garage, I would have liked it closer to the neighbors, but I have to put it within the zoning. I, there's a reason why the zoning's there. I, I don't see the hardship.
Well, don't forget, this is a recommendation to zone.
I understand that, but I.
They can do whatever they want. We could recommend going back to the, the size that should be, ten by twelve. And, and he still wants it. He could try to.
Or minimizing the impact of, so that it's not always in the area.
So it's either yes or no. Because if you tell him ten by twelve, he doesn't need zoning.
He doesn't.
Compared to the original application, that there wasn't a whole lot of information, which is why I was concerned about it. Uh, that had shown the, uh, the shed almost on the property line. So this is, uh, an adjustment, uh, but it's still forty square feet larger than bylaw allows.
Right. Is anyone else?
Make a motion. We send an unfavorable, I, I, that, that I'm, I'm not convinced that there's a hardship and that, that we send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Do I hear a second? Babe's second. Uh, how many in favor?
Yeah, I'll vote.
Pat?
I'd like to add the possibility of a ten by twelve.
I, I'm with Joe. There is no hardship that, that's recognizable. Unfortunately, I think if you had relocated it to get it kind of within the footprint, I would have been more amenable to saying, okay, do the hundred and sixty. But if that's where it has to be, then I, I think it's more prudent to do a hundred and twenty. So I'm with, I guess I'm.
Okay, so, uh.
Favorable as well.
Yep.
So you're unanimous? Withdraw and just go for it.
Okay, so.
No, no, you go to the zoning board.
I would go to, you may as well go to the zoning board. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be the first person to, to get it, to have a different recommendation than us.
If they say no, they normally say yes. Ask Kevin. So don't, do not, do yourself a favor. Do not with, I mean, obviously go and.
See what they have to say. You never know.
Go and make your presentation.
And realizing that you have the option of bringing yourself down to a hundred and twenty and doing it legally. But I would not withdraw it. And again.
Right. Right.
I'm only, I'm somewhat being facetious, but Kevin goes to those meetings, and I, I think he can certainly tell you that they don't take our recommendations.
They certainly don't take it as gospel. They will, they will evaluate it on their own, so you may.
So the, right, so the best thing.
That may hit something with them that they agree with, so.
So the best thing you can do is go to the zoning board, make your presentation, and you never know.
I would.
Okay?
Just the luck.
Thank you, and good luck.
Did you need that other, larger print?
All right.
Yep. Did you need that other larger?
What is this one?
Another one there, too, isn't there?
Chicken coop. No. Yeah, there might be one there.
Yeah, there's another one there.
You don't need that, do you?
This is yours?
That's yours, yep.
Edley?
All right, I'm just kind of looking over what we're doing. Number ten, special permit, ZBA special permit referral thirty-eight Resner Road, Ricardo D. Olivera.
It's an incomplete application, Larry.
Dear Madam Chairman, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow a chicken coop and nineteen chickens on the subject property. The zoning bylaw provides for such residential animal use in specific areas. The application form is incomplete, and the plan submitted to, with the application, the septic system as built, built plan. The proposed location of a chicken coop is not indicated on the plan. Therefore, I recommend a far favorable report to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals.
I, I'm going to.
Only if adequate information is provided.
I, I'm going to skip over to, to number eleven, specifically subsection three. When it refers to the creation of nuisances or hazards affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public.
Yep.
And their response was maybe create a nuisance. I'm going to go with the unfavorable to the ZBA based on the own, you know, based on the applicant's own.
Motion made by Pat to send it unfavorable to the ZBA. Do I hear a second?
Second, I.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous.
What about Bandi's?
Okay.
They have chickens all over the place. It's grandfathered.
Yeah, it is.
Number eleven, possible amendment subdivision regulation cul-de-sacs requirements.
This is follow-up from what the discussion was a meeting or so ago, about having the planted center section of cul-de-sacs be a planter island and not just pave the whole thing. So based on our regs that require a hundred and twenty-foot diameter, if you did a sixty-foot donut in the middle, and who better to write a donut bylaw than me, right? This language would allow for it, and then on a case-by-case basis, you would be looking at the grades, you'd be looking at, depending on the area, what type of vegetation, for example, you may or may not want in it.
Who would maintain the donut, though?
Yeah, who'd take care of it? Scotty, Scott. Scott said he would.
I talked to Scott before I even.
I like the idea of the donut, but I just.
I talked to Scott before I even brought it up, because I wouldn't have brought it up.
I like the idea of it.
And Scott said, yeah, he says it'd be good for the groundwater.
No, I'm with you, I like the idea a lot.
And he said he'd maintain it, so.
That's great.
I like it a lot, I like the idea.
Larry, you did talk to Scott about this?
Yeah, I just verified that, you know, I didn't get into the details, but.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm going to have.
I like the idea, I just.
Maintenance was initial. I'm going to have GNH do a, a sample cul-de-sac with, with and without this for the public hearing.
I think it's a great idea.
The public hearing is the first, the next, your next meeting.
The only.
I posted it this morning.
The only idea, the only idea that I had to change it, Larry, just so that it's not in question, was when you say live planting, I would say live native low-maintenance planting. So that way, it's known when they come forward to us, because that's, that's what I would like to see out there.
Would you say live native?
Native, low, native low maintenance. I mean, there's a big thing now with native plantings in the states going through and pulling out a lot of invasive species that, that were used before, is a lot of planting stuff, so I want to make sure. I know we have, at the end of the day, we have the right to, to tell them, but I just want it in the, in the document itself.
Yeah, but we'll be able to finalize that public hearing next.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, so, but it goes, goes out, and we'll have that.
Okay.
Other than that, that.
And then, and the signs would.
Next meeting?
Well, possibly. I mean, I don't know what else we can really do with them.
I guess, well, the only thing I'd like to talk about with the signs to a certain extent, Larry, is based on the court decision and what we have, it's my reading that, that if we're going to allow it, and this gets into the temporary signs, if we're going to allow temporary signs, we're allowing temporary signs. There's no, there's no differentiation. We're already, to a certain extent, we're, we've already gone down the path, and that's why I think we have to go through this, because, because we allow political signs, we now